Counselor Olson.
Here.
Bridge.
Bender.
Standberg.
McDonald.
Here.
Doyle.
Here.
Finland.
Here.
Herrick.
Here.
McKenzie is excused.
Brown.
Here.
Nowiki.
Here.
...claims committee, Andrea Hammond to the Parks and Recreation Commission, and Bob Corey and Donald Bergman to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
For the motion in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 10.1 is a resolution introduced by the Common Council of the City Superior appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the general city government and the administration of the City of Superior, Wisconsin for year 2012, and authorizing and directing a tax levy to be spread on the tax roll of the City of Superior, Wisconsin for the year 2011.
What is the pleasure? For the motion in second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 11.1 is an ordinance introduced by the city clerk relating to the consolidation of 10 polling locations to five. This was held from the November 1 council meeting, and we have three members of the public signed up to speak.
For the motion in second, to approve, discussion? Public members wish to speak?
Debbie Backland.
Yeah, my name is Debbie Backland, and I live at 1221 R. 12th Street. And I'm only three blocks from here to vote. And it's handy for me, and it's convenient. My concern is that if you move this from here and put it elsewhere, other people like me will have to find transportation to get to the pollings. And we need it to be kept where it's on a bus line, where they have parking to where other people that are handicap accessible that can get in there and vote. I mean, this is handy for me, I like it. But I can understand where you guys need to find another place, but if you do, keep it in the area where the people in the 6th District will be easy for them.
Thank you.
Gail Weiner. I'm Gail Weiner, and I live in the 6th District, and I live 1221 Baxter Avenue. I have voted in the 6th District for over 40 years. I was also a poll worker in the 6th District. I totally agree with the concept of combining the polling places. I think it makes sense, it's going to save money. But I'm feeling like to put us down at Peter Rich Center is really a spread for those of us that live in the 6th District, and for some of those of us who have handicap needs, I would like to see it on a bus line. And I know the Salvation Army is on a bus line. And it's very well-lit there, and the gas station is next door. Otherwise, totally believe in the concept, but I think the place being chosen isn't working very well for the people of the 6th District, especially the elderly and those that are disabled. And I must say that I usually just vote in Terry's office, but for all the other people in the 6th District, I'd like to speak to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kim Culp.
Kim Culp, I live at 1301 Baxter right over here. And like Gail, I would like to see it. I understand combining them, because I've come here and voted when there's been more poll workers than people voting on some of these spring elections. And I can understand combining it at one location, and I agree that the Salvation Army is a good location. It's not in the 6th, but it's in the 10th. It's handy for both districts, it's convenient for everybody, it's on a bus line, there's plenty of parking. Like Gail was saying, there's plenty of lighting, the gas station's there, and it's very handy to get to. So I would like to see the polling place in the Salvation Army, like was suggested originally. Thank you.
Thank you. So further discussion?
Jackie, turn your light on. Turn your light. Okay, now I got to remember the question. Is...
You sound like a presidential candidate.
Counselor Joy.
Well, when I think of consolidation, I also believe that there's compromise that needs to be affected. In looking at the situation of the Salvation Army versus the Peter Rich Center, I'd like to address what I call the equality of sacrifice. Which side, which group is sacrificing the most? But to come at it from another direction, I'd like to point out some advantages to the constituents of the 10th District. The first one, of course, is that they keep a polling place in their district. Another upgrade is there's a better lighted facility offered by the Salvation Army, given the fact of the Super America Station located next door to the Salvation Army. There's better parking at the Salvation Army. And finally, there's an upgrade in bus service. The closest bus stop to Peter Rich would be at Hammond and Bellnap, excuse me, Hammond and Broadway. And the closest bus stop to the Salvation Army is right at the corner of their parking lot, on Hewitt and Broadway. Turning the attention to the 6th District, the advantage of going to the Salvation Army would be an upgrade in parking. The lighting would be roughly equal to what we enjoy here at Government's Center. And the bus service, of course, is superior. It's an upgrade, oh, no, excuse me, it's a draw. We have bus service basically at the front door here, we'll have it there at the Salvation Army. And for those reasons, I ask my fellow counselors to support the Salvation Army. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion?
I just want to clarify that the ordinance as being submitted to you is with the recommendation of the Salvation Army for the 6th and 10th District.
Counselor.
Well, I was speaking with the understanding that there had been an amendment that was tabled.
Well, I recommended an amendment at the last meeting, and it got held to this meeting. That amendment was never made, so I resubmitted it as the Salvation Army. That's what's coming before you.
Thank you.
And after speaking with Counselor Joy, and meeting with both Counselor Joy and Counselor Brown, I believe the Salvation Army is a superior location. Both of them would work fine, but Len brings up some very good points as far as the parking and the bus line, but either one would work.
Counselor Brown.
Yes, I'd just like to say, there was a lot of confusion there, and it was too bad that Len got kind of left out at the beginning when we went down and looked at the locations. I believe Len was on vacation, and so he didn't have the opportunity to go. But last week, I had a meeting with the residents of the 10th District, and I want to thank all the residents that came. And just to let you know that the residents of the 10th District are happy with their voting place and have voted there for many years. I believe it's in the best interest of all the voters of the City of Superior to make voting as convenient as possible as we can for them. I think that's our job. Also, our job is to save money for the taxpayers, and I understand that. But I think voting comes first. So, and I asked my constituents that came to the meeting how they felt about the move, and no, they were not, they were pretty happy with voting where they do in the 10th District. So, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor?
Is Salvation Army able to host? I know there was talk they wouldn't be able to because of the changing locations. They're cool? They're okay?
Any further discussion? If not, you've heard the motion in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 11.1 is an ordinance introduced by the Public Works Department amending the traffic code of disabled parking zones by adding 611 Coming Avenue.
For the motion in second, discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 12.1 is a presentation from the Metropolitan Interstate Council regarding the Transportation Systems Management Study they recently completed in Superior.
Director Sirk.
Thank you, Mayor, counselors. With pleasure, I introduce Ron Chica, who is the Director of the Metropolitan Interstate Council, and Robert Hurling, who is a transportation planner there. Recently, they've completed a Transportation System Management Assessment. I think those of you on the MIC probably saw this presentation at its last meeting. I think Counselor Olson wanted the full council to see it, to look at some of the issues that were found with some of our intersections and some of our locations within the City of Superior. And I guess we'll go from there. Ron?
Appreciate the introduction, and I'm Ron Chica, Director of the MIC, working in Duluth, Superior. Appreciate, thanks to the mayor, the counselors, and staff for coming to present tonight. I think you're familiar with the MIC, too, and what we do. I'll kind of dispense with that. A number of folks here work on our various committees and boards, and some of the counselors, and some past folks who have worked with us, so I appreciate your time with us. And the ones that currently with us, as Jason mentioned, and Dan Olson brought forward the thought to bring this work to you tonight, just to talk a little bit about it. And I'm going to let Robert talk about the dozen or so slides he has here. But I just wanted to preface it with a couple of remarks. As you know, we work with the city, the county, the DOT, and kind of all things transportation. This is a look at the intersections, a number of intersections, and then some of the key ones in terms of some mitigation measures, some safety improvements that might move forward once construction or once implementation is decided upon, whether that's by the city, the county, or the state. That's kind of your discretion when it comes to a city-controlled point. This study will be approved by my policy board, the policy board of the MIC that consists of folks on Duluth and Superior's side. And it's just a series of, you know, it's a guidance document, a series of possible implementation measures that could occur on these intersections. And there are a host of them, and they're studied, there are a range of some options that can work. But really, I just wanted to point out that once those recommendations are approved with our plan, then it's really a guidance document for the city to use as they see fit. Should some funding come to light, you'd have recommendations for whatever, for the intersections in our plan. So that's what this is. Kind of what I really just wanted to make that point here, is that our board will approve this, and then it's a document for you, the city, to use as you'd like to, in development proposals, or as the intersections come up for possible reconstruction. So I think with that, just a little preface remark, again, thanks for being here, and I'll let Robert talk to the slides here. Thank you.
I'd like to quickly also express my thanks for having the opportunity to come before you and share this information. Just one more word about clarification here. I think I would like to point out that this work has been titled "An Assessment," and it's not a plan, per se. I think there was some concern when we first presented this to our MIC board that some of these recommendations were being put forth as a plan for implementation, and really this is, what we're presenting is the results, the findings of our work, and some essentially menu of possible options for dealing with some of these intersections. Ron kind of spoke to this already, so I won't dwell on it, but basically, the MIC is charged with kind of overseeing the transportation system for the entire metro region. We kind of have a systems perspective on things, and that's why we take equal interest in what's going on over here in Superior, as well as Duluth and Herman Town and some of the underlying rural townships. What is TSM? Well, TSM stands for Transportation Systems Management. It's kind of a planning and engineering philosophy, if you will, that's aimed at kind of fine-tuning what we already have in place. Another way to look at it perhaps is to extract the best, to extract improvement out of already, what's already there. Really, the goal of it is to look for improvements that are smaller scale, lower cost, and have some history of being effective. An example, a familiar example is the center-left turn lanes that we're all familiar with that we have here in Superior. That is one example of a low-cost improvement to the structure as it's already there. We kind of divide this TSM work up into two different camps. There's the efficiency aspect or the operational aspect of the facilities, and there's also the safety aspect of the facilities. You'll look at those two lists, and you'll see there's some overlap, but essentially, these are some other examples of the TSM strategy, just basically taking a look at what's there and trying to find ways to improve existing resources. So improving what signals are in place, if we can optimize the signal timing, that's one example. If we have the ability to restripe roadways to improve channelization, that's another example. Removal of site obstructions, improving transit conditions, all of those fit kind of under this broader philosophy or strategy of TSM. So why is the MIC doing this work? Well, again, we're kind of overseeing the system, and the aim of this work was to kind of optimize limited resources, approach this work with sort of a data-driven, objective analysis. And as far as the MIC's work, it was very quick and easy and relatively inexpensive assessment to perform. So we basically are bringing this forward as kind of to show you the results of this work, and basically say here, this work has been done, and use it as you see fit. I don't want to dwell on this, I realize you can't, probably can't read that, but what I wanted to illustrate with this slide is to show you that there was sort of a process here of scoring and ranking. The different access, there's accesses there. One axis is operate, the bottom axis is operational, the vertical axis represents the safety score. So we kind of scored each location based on those two areas, and then combined them. And that line, that diagonal line there represents kind of this line of demarcation between those intersections which had high scores and those which had lower scores. So the ones that are off to the upper right-hand corner above that line are the ones that scored high, and I'll speak to a couple of those in a minute. Another thing that you'll notice about this graphic is that there's dots that have little traffic cones next to them. That's just, those are intersections. We kind of took the results of this study, and we went back, and we cross-referenced it with our long-range plan, which has a series of planned projects that are supposed to occur over the next 20 years. And we just, we kind of checked off those that, those intersections that lie on any of those road segments that are scheduled to be improved in the future. And why did we do that? We did that because those represent potential opportunities to do some significant TSM improvements. So I'll show you, I'll speak a little bit more to that in the next slide, I believe. Right, so this basically is a number of those intersections that were on that graphic in the previous slide. There's four that are in orange, and those represent the four intersections that were kind of above that line. And then the bottom four are kind of the next highest scoring. They fell in sort of a mid-range, but they all have reconstruction planned for them, at least in our long-range plan. And just to be clear, that those projects are projects that the City of Superior themselves put forth for inclusion in our long-range plan. So it's my understanding that that's in the capital improvement, not in the capital improvement plan, but it's on, sort of on your radar screen for projects that you'll be pursuing to put into the capital improvement plan in coming years. So anyway, what we have here, as you can see, is Tower Avenue and North 28th Street is the highest scoring among them. The score was out of 10, and it scored a 7.2. That's combined, combining the safety and the operational score. And the next one is Hammond Avenue and North 5th Street. Elmira Avenue and 28th Street, which is a lesser-volume intersection, and I'll speak to that a little bit more in a minute, too. And then Tower Avenue and North 21st, so the kind of, the four that ranked kind of high here. And then the other ones, as I said, all will be potentially receiving some reconstruction in the next 10 years. So Hammond and North 5th, I'm just going to pull a couple of these and speak to them at length, but I'll show you a link to the document that you all can take a look at, all the other intersections in there at your discretion. But a couple of them that we brought to the board for discussion and had some significant discussion on, I'll share with you tonight. And Hammond and North 5th is one that received a lot of discussion, primarily because some of the recommendations that we have listed there. But basically, this intersection scored high, and it scored relatively high because of safety concerns, has some crash history there. But we also have looked at this intersection a number of times. I've done some speed surveying out there, and the speeds, as they come off of the, off of the bridge and onto Hammond are significantly high. I think that we, the survey showed an average speed of 46, 47 miles per hour, so that's higher than the 30 mile-hour speed limit that's posted there. Anyway, what's going on here is you have essentially a interstate facility quickly merging with a city street. And if you look on the aerial below there, you can get a better idea of just kind of that wide roadway that you have high speeds kind of coming into those, into that location down there that has a lot of business accesses. So kind of a couple of recommendations, and I apologize for the recommendation at the bottom, it's in white text, and it doesn't look like it's very easy to read, but I'll just go ahead and read these off for you. The first one is install a speed display messaging board for southbound traffic. That's traffic that's coming off of that bridge onto the city street. We'd like to remind them of their speeds and make them aware that their speeds might be higher than they should be, and that gives them an opportunity to realize they need to slow down. But the next, the next recommendation, and the one that got quite a bit of discussion at our board meeting, was, we're saying here, explore opportunities for closing or modifying some of those accesses that are closest to the intersection, and I wish I had a laser pointer here to point some of these out. But in particular, I think we're speaking about this access here, and this access here we're kind of concerned about. But the recommendation, again, is merely that, it's sort of an idea, and I want to stress that we're using the language "explore opportunities." That doesn't mean that we're asking for these, or we're recommending that these be closed tomorrow. It is more along the lines of if there is any land use changes that occur here in the near future, or any business owner changes, or any potential opportunities to modify it, that's our recommendation. We feel that safety conditions would be improved at this location if there were some changes that could be made to the accesses. Also, the next recommendation there is to create some sort of pedestrian refuge on Hammond Avenue, ideally, ideally kind of this stretch here. It doesn't need to be an extended raised median, but maybe something that allows a pedestrian to only have to cross half of the length and then take refuge for crossing the rest of it, and doesn't have to try to cross four plus streams of traffic in one bound. And then finally, the last recommendation is to explore opportunities to modify the transit route. And that recommendation in particular has to do with some potential modifications that might be occurring to the intersection up here at the northeast corner with the future bridge project that WISDOT will be doing on the Bong in 2014. The MIC did some modeling, traffic modeling, to see what a closure of the bridge for that construction season would do, and the model said that there might be some traffic, some potential traffic congestion issues at that location, and that maybe one of the, one of the things that they, we should think about doing is doing a sort of a half closure there. Now, that's at WISDOT's discretion, and they haven't determined whether they're going to do that or not, but if they do, it's going to impact transit quite a bit. If they do do that, they also haven't said whether it would be temporary necessarily or not. So just as a word of precaution, we're saying we would like to, for consideration, explore opportunities to reroute the transit possibly, or find ways to improve that stop. If there's any questions, I'll move on to the next slide.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
At the intersection at Hammond and 5th, a lot of, myself included, rather than taking the off-ramp, I will go to Hammond and 5th, go east on 5th to Grand Avenue and come on East 2nd Street. And it's quite a, it's quite a common pattern, and I think any consideration to not have that turnoff available would be detrimental to the businesses there, but also, I think, discouraging for other reasons of traffic movement. The second thing is, I think many of us are concerned, I know I hear it from the public daily, about the speed along Hammond Avenue coming off the bridge all the way to North 21st Street. And it, in my opinion at least, has turned into a speedway. And I've been speaking with DOT people, and I'm sure your folks like yourself, there needs to be a mechanism available to slow that traffic down. Years ago, there were boulevards in the middle of Hammond Avenue, and since they were taking out, taken out, it's just become a wider and more vicious speed trap. And it's dangerous, if I will, to get onto Hammond Avenue from certain locations all along Hammond Avenue because of that nature. That's all I have to say.
Counselor Brown.
Yeah, I'm a member of the MIC committee, and I brought this up at our last MIC committee. And I agree with you that when they did have the boulevards on Hammond Avenue, it did slow the traffic down immediately when they, of course, that wasn't the main route years ago either. 5th Street used to be the main route going over the old interstate bridge. But that's such a raceway coming down there now, pedestrians trying to get across Hammond Avenue, take their life in their own hands trying to get across there. And the traffic coming off the bridge, using 5th Street as another route, they race right down 5th Street, too. So it becomes pretty hazardous down there at quitting time in the evening. So I don't know what the answer is for that. I've thought about it a lot, and I just really can't come up with anything in my mind yet. But if any of the residents down there have a good solution for it, we'd really be happy to hear it.
If there's any more questions, I'll move on to the next slide. The other intersection that I wanted to share with you, or I guess it's a set of intersections, is Hammond Avenue and Winter Street and Tower Avenue and Winter Street. These kind of, both came into the list kind of in a combination of their safety and operational scores. But essentially, we're kind of concerned with facilitating a movement through these intersections, and a lot of the operational concerns have to do with the proximity to the train tracks. There's two recommendations up there, and the first one is kind of just an observation that was made, and this is basically, would benefit both safety and operations, but we noticed there was not strong representations of center lines or edge lines on Winter Street, and thought that that would be a benefit to that facility. So that's one recommendation. But the second recommendation, which again is hard to read, and I do apologize for that, is it reads, "Do a study of signals, of signals/rail operation to explore opportunities for moving or adding signals to the Winter Street intersections." So those dots that you see on the aerial there are the two intersections that we're talking about, and just a block south from there is the intersection of, the intersection of Tower and... of Tower and, and Hammond with Broadway, and that's where the existing current signals are. And so we are interested in possibly looking at opportunities to either relocate those signals, to facilitate traffic movement on Hammond, especially as it relates to heavy truck movement. But maybe there's an opportunity to also upgrade those signals to include some interactivity with the rail signals, so that they would be able to more efficiently signal for, when a train movement's happening, to kind of move traffic through there more efficiently as well. Are there any questions or comments about those recommendations? So those are the two that I wanted to just share with you. There was a total of nine, I believe, that we looked at, or that we've put in the document. And that document can be looked at, at that website, or that web address down there, www.dsmic.org/tsm. And then I invite any questions or comments being sent to my, my email up there as well.
Counselor Bender?
First of all, Robert, thank you for making this presentation. And even though I've seen it once before, I, I looked with, with special interest at the grid that you had there, because my wife and I were driving a few days ago, and we, we got to the Banks and Belknap, which I know was on the grid. And my wife was late for work because the signal never came up for the, for the left turn there. And part of that has to do with that, that trigger that's, the person in front of her didn't pull up far enough. And I know that you had mentioned at the last MIC meeting, too, and I don't remember if it was with this presentation or with another one, but as, as far as, I'm working on, on those pavement-type triggers, because if you don't pull up far enough, not going to get the signal. She waited for seven minutes at that light, and was late to work. And I said, "They're going to make a presentation, and I'll mention it, because we don't have a MIC meeting in November." It's just a comment, if you don't have an answer, that's fine.
President Olson?
I still want to know where the light at 58th and Tower is. That's it. I'm going to keep on asking.
I, I have a question regarding 58th and Tower. I mentioned earlier that a new, a new industry has come to town out there, and we're, we're getting some information from them with regard to the enhanced traffic that they're going to provide, or some would say cause, I say provide, with regard to truck movement and other docks that they're going to install, and potentially enlarge that facility or build another one. And with that, in 2013, and 14, and 15, there'll be enhanced, very heavy truck traffic coming from the, the pits outside of town for the construction of, reconstruction of Tower Avenue, the off- and on-ramps for the Bong Bridge in 14, and the Bong Bridge in 15. The question therein is, we are going to make another run at the signalization of that portion of Tower Avenue's south end, and we would very much appreciate MIC giving us some guidance on that, so that we can strengthen the justification for that particular opportunity, but also, opportunity's a wrong word, safety factor. It isn't so much the traffic on Tower Avenue out there, it's twofold. One is the speed, which disallows people from wanting to enter Tower Avenue from 56th, 58th, Central Avenue, to be very much in danger. So we're going to take another run at that.
Okay. We will definitely be discussing that.
Just for information, too, Robert, I have submitted that intersection to Superior Days as an agency issue, so we're going to be contacting the Wisconsin DOT to try and garner some support as well for that. But in closing of your, your presentation, I just want to thank you for coming. We saw this once already, and I just want to thank you guys for the, the in-depth study that you guys, when you're out there on the streets, because you get to see on those street corners these things that are happening, you know? These are still pictures, you can show them all day, but when you're out with the boots on the ground doing some of these things, the, the safety is a concern, first and foremost. So I thank you, appreciate that.
Thanks. Just a quick word, and thanks again, and we'll take a look at this Tower and 28th. I know, or, sorry, Tower and 58th Friday in there. That one's already trying to, has a light, but appreciate the comments. We'll help out as best we can here. I know, Dan, Counselor, you've wanted to take a look at this, and we'll assist, we'll try to get some of the parties together, and you mentioned you may go after some with Superior Days, so we'll help out. Thank you.
I may, make one last comment, and Jason, you probably have already told me this, but I've probably forgot. We're in the process of evaluating East 2nd Street and 22nd Avenue, or 23rd, I'm not sure, and for the purposes of that, improving the ingress/egress out there, especially with the Super 1 being constructed. And we'll appreciate your, your assistance with regard to the signalization study that's going to be conducted out there.
Yes, thanks. And I know Jason could probably say a word, but I can too. We are, that is going on, the work is looking at the operational needs of that point, that land area, so we hope to present something there, and/or the folks that are assisting the city with, with that work, so I guess we'll be there.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor, we stand adjourned.